Welcome to the show, ladies and gentlemen. This is Ando's Thinky Time Podcast. Today, it's a weird episode, man. I guess that's just how this show's gonna be, man. Probably gonna hear me say "uh" and "man" a lot. Because I got stoned before I recorded this. And that's okay, man. That's uh... That's just who I am right now. But beyond the marijuana that I've gleefully consumed, I feel like I've taken some kind of strange psychedelic drug. Because it seems like reality is subtly bending to my will, ladies and gentlemen. Because I care about politics, but I don't want to run for politics. I don't think that's my place. And that's okay to do... It's okay to not know your place, but I do know mine. And mine is not necessarily in the political realm. But I care about politics because I'm no longer a religious man, and so because I don't believe that there's a God planning things for us and taking care of us, I believe we have to take care of each other. We have to make plans with each other. That's politics. And it is my hope for society that, that um more, let's call them decent people, uh, will get involved in politics. I feel like a lot of times, the only people that try and get these jobs are money hungry or power hungry assholes. Not every, not everybody that's ever been in politics, but I would even think maybe the majority, a strong sixty to seventy percent, uh, are in it for the wrong reasons. And uh, one of my hopes for society is that more more good folks would get in those jobs and um and so I try and interview politicians whenever we get a chance. The, the sort of um influencer folks of society. That's, you know, it's it's an important job politics is what I'm trying to say at much labor. Last time, last episode, we had um a politician running for Congress. Uh, wants to go to Washington and have that experience and try and make a difference at that level. Got to respect that. Uh, so had her on. She was a delightful person. Um, Ando's Thinky Time Podcast, episode number one. You can check that out. Either on Patreon.com/theprairiescholars or just look it up on YouTube or subscribe to the Prairie Scholars Podcast uh, and Ando's Thinky Time Podcast on um iTunes or whatever. Or, you know, you know how to access things on the internet? Jesus, you're listening to this now. My friend Josh Goldberg is the uh the guest today. He's running for city council. Elections coming up directly, sort of at the end of February. Really important to get involved at the local level because that's where change starts. Um, and if you love our community, uh, you should take some responsibility for it by educating yourself and getting to know some of the people that are making the, the decisions that affect how people think of our city. Josh Goldberg's running. Uh, he is a great dude. I don't usually endorse politicians. I'll, I'll have them on and be kind, but I don't usually outright endorse somebody. This time's a little different. Um, because I happen to know Josh very well. And he is exactly the kind of person that I want to be in politics. You'll get to hear all about who he is. I think he presented himself well here. So, uh, enjoy the episode. If you'd like to become a sponsor of this show, which, you know, obviously you've noticed this show doesn't have any sponsors yet. Um, I haven't really opened it up to that. I wanted to see what the fuck we were doing first. And get these political episodes out of the way too. If you'd like to become a sponsor of this show, and you should, uh, email me at Andy@Andiepler.com or just contact me if we're already friends. Holy crap, just uh, whatever, contact me, let me know. Uh, we'll work something out. I'd be happy to endorse local companies, uh, just like we do for the Prairie Scholars Podcast. So, uh, this is episode number two of Ando's Thinky Time Podcast. I hope you enjoy it, man. I hope you dig it, man. I hope you have a great day. Thank you for listening to my little show. Just start recording. There's a fucking Buddha hanging out in the backyard. And he's welcome to hang out back there because he's not real preachy dude, you know?
Pretty quiet, sitting in the corner. Makes things a little bit better, sitting in his own little spot.
Yeah, I put a little painted rock in his lap. He seems to feel happy with it. You know, I'd put a Jesus back there too if he didn't seem like he's pointing at anybody, whatever. He's just like thumbs up, Jesus.
Looking a little too hard at me.
Well, Buddy Christ action. I'd go for that. You don't remember him?
I do.
Thank you for coming on my little podcast.
It's my pleasure.
Had you on the Prairie Scholars Podcast a long time ago.
It was one of the honors of my life.
No, I'm glad that we both remember it so fondly. You're back because as I predicted many years ago, people want to hand you power in the city. You are now running for city council.
Dun dun!
Which is good.
I don't know if people want to have me power, but I'm gonna do my best to to inspire and, and get the community to support, which will translate to some power, which is of course what we're not all in it for.
No, you're in it for, you know, to help because you're a helper. Now, you've always shown that. Everybody's always known that about you. Ever since I came to the community, in 2007, I toured through here. And I got a gig at Left Hand. And that was back when the music used to happen where basically the trashcans are now.
Yeah, right up against the garage, right up against the move up door. Is that where it is?
No, it was before that even. I think my first time I played.
Was it like in a little nook?
In the nook beside the bar.
Yeah.
Like across from the bar.
Oh, yes.
That little nook is.
Oh man, that was a long time ago.
It was a long time ago. And uh, and I came in and I met you. And you were so personable. You made me feel like a real person, you know? I'd been on tour for uh, weeks at that point by myself, sleeping in the car and all this. And dealing with bar owners. It's a dark world out there, Josh. And uh, I, when I came into Left Hand, I was kind of half expecting kind of to be treated like I'd been treated at some of these other places in New Mexico and kind of like, oh, here's the fucking noise guy. Here you go, noise guy. Go over there, the corner and be noisy, you bitch. And uh, you know, and that's kind of how I was treated, which is fair because I had heavy drinker kind of back then. But um, when I showed up to Left Hand, I felt so welcomed. And you were so friendly to me.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you.
You know, we did, we have been doing our best for, well, I joined the brewery in April of 2007, so...
So this would have been in July.
Yes, this was, I was fresh, young. I wasn't jaded yet. I mean, it was, I mean, clearly it was only a year later when you came back that I was jaded and I didn't answer phone calls. It's over there, plug it in and don't be too loud.
Yeah, a scar across his neck.
Uh, no, you know, I, once I joined the Left Hand family there in the tasting room, it was my mission to to make that place cheers. Cheers, you know, to make it a place where you know everyone's name, to make it Longmont's living room, to make it the place, the gathering place, you know, of all types of folks. And it, and it had great roots, you know, the Eric and Chinsia and Dick and the leadership of Left Hand beforehand, I think were already down that path. I just happened to be the guy with a big smile behind the bar that, you know, that was there day in and day out trying to nurture that. And you know, I think we did some really cool things, you know, during my tenure behind the bar and making it warm and welcome and doing our best to remember names and remembering what beer you want and maybe even have it on the bar before you, you sat down. It was all part of, you know, what I think is building community.
See, that's what I recognized about it. When I came into that place, I had never seen, because you were the bar manager, right? That was your gig.
Bartender at the time. Oh man, I was just a bartender.
Just pour the beers, sir.
Yeah, I hope I know the right code to charge you.
I had never thought of a bartender as a community leader. But when I met you, I realized like, no, this person deals with people all the time, every day. And if he deals with them shitty way, they don't come back to the brewery. If he deals with them nicely, they come, they make friends with each other. You're introducing chiefs, you know, you're being kind of this connective tissue. I found that to be very inspiring. And then when I came back in, you know, I think a few months later probably and maybe in 2008, maybe before, I was surprised that you totally remembered my name. And I didn't remember your name because I...
I'll never forget that you didn't remember my name.
That burned my ass for years. Yeah, I, I was really amazed. You were like, oh, hey, Andy, how you been? I was like, holy shit, mister. I remember your face and liking you, but I don't remember your name.
Yeah, and then I asked you to play one song. I've only like requested one song in my life. And at the ripe old age of, what were you at the time?
I don't know.
Twenty-five? At the ripe old age of twenty-five, you had retired a song. You responded to my, my gentle query, my polite request for one song and you said, "No, Josh, I've retired that song." And I was like, "You're twenty-five! You can't retire a song yet." But you did and...
Yeah, I did, man.
And that's fine.
It was a song called C sharp minor, right?
That's right.
Okay, yeah. I wrote that song uh, with my buddy back when I was sixteen years old.
So you'd already been playing it for ten years?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Although I think Billy Joel's still playing Piano Man and it's probably been fifteen years.
Piano Man and Billy Joel, Josh. You know? I mean, uh, he got paid more for the studio session than I ever made off that song. You know what I mean?
Anyways.
I'm not a proud man, but I do get tired of my art.
Right.
So I, I think...
It's watercolors.
Oh my god, don't get me started on the watercolor thing. What a mess. If you're, oh, listener, you know, you're...
If you look around the room where we're, where we're sitting, there's a lot of wonderful watercolor art in development and...
Kind of a chemical spill.
Andy's growing his skill in the art of watercolor.
I'm attempting. Well, when I saw you back then, I really did know like, this is a person that like is worth paying attention to. Like a, uh, not like the other monkeys. And so I'm not surprised that A, you are interested in running for city council, but B, I'm not surprised that there's so many people around us that seem to be interested in that too. You seem to have a lot of support.
I hope so. I hope so. Uh... You know, my story, my story is a little bit different than most. Uh, and certainly different from my opponent in that my story is a Longmont story, you know? Um, I moved here from New York City before that, Highlands Ranch and before that, San Diego. But when we landed, my wife and I, Wendy and I, landed in Longmont, there was something just special. And a lot of it, I tie back to the tasting room and the the space behind the stone bar and on the, and the guests on the other side. So, you know, what makes that place special is the folks who frequent and come to, to Left Hand. And those are the very folks who have inspired me to want to be good, to want to, you know, elevate our town, to want to contribute to the Longmont story. And so, yeah, I mean, we have just the most wonderful, hardworking moms and dads and young adults that just wanna you know, have good discussions and want to contribute and wonderful artists and we have politicians and nonprofit leaders and police officers and local engineers and everything in between. All rallying at this place called the Left Hand Tasting Room. Uh, and there's no TVs to distract us. There's no sports games. There's no loud, you know, jukebox. It's mostly about uh, creating this sense of community and so as a result of being the guy slinging beers with the right personality, uh, I couldn't help but want to get, become a bigger part of that. And so it, you know, first, first it was try to help make a, a great experience inside that tasting room. And then kind of the way I looked at it was, but what if my tasting room didn't end within the four walls of the brewery? What if my tasting room became community-wide or something further one day? And so I saw Longmont as, you know, my tasting room and what do I want to do? Well, I want to contribute. I want to get involved. You know, and in the earliest times it was, there was this program that the Longmont area Chamber of Commerce puts on called Leadership Longmont. It's really cool. It's a um six months or so, one session a month and you go from kind of pillar of our community to pillar of our community. So one class is dedicated to government, one to education, one to media, one to healthcare. And you hear from the leaders of those pillars of that infrastructure. So you're in the same room as the superintendent and he's telling you about the challenges and the successes of the school district. And then you're sitting in with city council and they're telling you the challenges and the experience of being part of the leadership of our town. And then you're at the hospital and Mitch Carson, the director at the time was president, was you know, giving us a private tour around the hospital and you just get this kind of wholesome, whole, you know, full picture of what it takes to run a town. And it's just wildly inspiring.
Yes.
And so, uh, as a result of my time there, I gained the, what I guess I'll call confidence to jump aboard uh, a committee called the Public Policy Committee. Let's also put on by the chamber, I remember showing up at my first Public Policy Committee meeting. I was, I, I didn't know better. I had just moved from New York City and in New York City, when you go to a meeting, you put on a black or dark gray suit. You put on a shirt that looks like it came out of your father's closet. And you tie a tie around your neck and you put on some shiny shoes and you head over to the meeting and I did exactly that. And I walked into my first Chamber of Commerce meeting and I looked around and there was a bunch of, you know, old white dudes with white hair with khaki and earth tones and, you know, kind of fuzzy pillowy sweaters. And I was like, man... I gotta do a better job fitting into this town.
I look like I'm an assassin here to kill all these guys.
So I take off my jacket, loosen my tie and I, for the next couple of meetings, just listen.
That's one thing you're gonna have to master as a politician is the, the casual sleeve roll-up, normal guy thing. Like with the hands, you gotta gesture with your hands a lot. You gotta roll your sleeves up. You loosen that tie. You're like, you know, fellas, let me tell you something.
Let's get to business.
Yeah, let me tell you, let's get some real work done today for America. That kind of shit, man.
Yeah.
I would love that.
So, so yeah, I jumped aboard this Public Policy Committee. I didn't know anything about public policy. I don't know why I was sitting in a room full of business owners and people who are smarter than me, folks who have been a part of the Longmont story longer than me. And, but before I, before I could ever, you know, vocalize or say what my role was, I quickly discovered what my role was and that was to, my first role was to challenge norms. And so that was when you get a bunch of folks who've been sitting in the same meeting at eight AM on Friday mornings for the last number of years, they all start to think the same, act the same, and it just becomes a little bit of a routine.
That's very natural.
Ask the same questions.
Tribe mentality, herd mentality. Humans are herd animals.
Right. I believe you on that.
I think that's true.
And so we, so my, it seemed like my job was hey, not even to disagree, but just to make sure we've asked ourselves all the tough questions before we move forward with a recommendation to approve a minimum wage hike or to deny a minimum wage hike or to do something that's going to impact our town. So, uh, the first thing I was doing was challenging norms, but in a respectful way. I didn't like come in with a big stick and drop it on the table. When you do that, you don't get, it's just not productive. You don't get the respect that you need to have a robust discussion.
It's not a very respectful thing to do, okay? There you go. You gotta be respectful if you want respect.
Amen.
That's it.
So, never like flaunting or um imparting judgment, you know, what about this? Hey, we haven't talked about it from this perspective. Hey, you know, next time we should have, we should hear from the opposition, not just the one in favor of this project. And so, whether on the Public Policy Committee or on the variety of other nonprofit boards I've served on, that has become my role. Not to be the smartest guy in the room, but to be the one who says, let's make sure we've considered all options. And then maybe be the last voice at the end of the discussion. Alright, so what I've heard is Andy thinks that Jesus is looking at him a little too hard. And you know, Josh thinks that Jesus is a little, has a little ADD and he's looking over there. Well, let's talk about what we can do to bring it together. And how can we get Jesus in the right spot? In the garden. Maybe it's next to Buddha.
He's just a statue. It's not his fault.
Right, it's not his fault. Maybe give him a little visor or something.
Yeah, that's it.
So, you know, finding that common ground where we can move forward together. Otherwise, we might get stuck.
Yeah, right.
And I've seen that along the way. You know, and I think that ability to poke and challenge but respectfully stemmed from having ten different men or women sitting at the bar and, you know, almost a little mischievously bringing up politics. You know, as the bartender, you can kind of direct the conversation.
Yeah, a little bit.
And be like, you know, hey, Tom, you know, what do you think about this thing? And the time it might have been, Obama might have been in office and then but Bill over here completely disagrees and, you know, kind of almost like a conductor orchestrated a conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, and keep it within the lines.
But it heats up a little bit, cooling down.
Kind of like make a little joke.
That's it.
And that's, that's kind of what my story has been.
That's a really important role to play in a group of people, I find.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. I agree. So we wrapped up at the, or so I've been with the Chamber of Commerce now for the better part of six years. Public Policy Committee, then the Board. I serve a term on the Visitors Association. This is something that I think you would be fantastic at in that there are different players in our town that impact tourism. And certainly the arts is one of those. Craft beer, wonderful food, the hotel industry. These are the folks who you find on, you know, Tourism Bureau boards. Uh, and so, uh, served with a bunch of smarter folks than me on that board, but brought a different skillset. And then eventually joined the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All the smartest people I've ever known personally make it a point to try and surround themselves with people that they perceive as being smarter than they are.
For sure.
So, that's, that's how I think of being smart. I want to be around the people. I want to play with people that are better than me. Because it's gonna make me better. You know, I want to, I'm always in a learning mode, you know? That way I can be in sort of a teaching mode too, you know, as an artist anyway.
You know, I, one day I walked into the office at Left Hand and I was having trouble with a, a goal or a deadline. And my boss was kind of digging into me and I said, "Well, I tell you what, this office is my grounding." And she's like, "What do you mean?" And I said, "Boy, out in the world, you know, I, you know, I'm respected and loved and my perspective is taken with some sincerity." And then I sit down in this office and you like just drive into me. But I think it is exactly that, is that we are better because we are chronically challenged.
Yes.
You know, and as soon as someone stops caring to challenge you, then we settle and we become complacent and stop progressing.
I think that's very wise. Yes, I think that's true. Now...
I don't know if anyone's ever called me wise, Andy.
Well, take it with a grain of salt from the source, you know what I'm saying? It's all the perspective question, Josh. I'm excited for you to, even like, even if you were to drop out of the race, I'm excited that you were interested in it at all. You know, I like the idea of you, someone like you getting into local politics. You're, to me, the ideal person to get involved in politics.
Thank you.
I don't consider you the politicking type, really. But you are definitely...
Wouldn't we be better if we had more non-politicking types in politics?
Right. I don't consider you as like a, a, a super safe, you know, uh, you know, careful politicking motherfucker. I consider you to be a community activist. And that's who we need uh, in politics. Um, I'm proud that you're interested in it.
Thank you. You know, just yesterday I was saying to someone, and when you're campaigning, you don't want to ever reveal the possibility of you not winning, right? But I said to someone, you know, if I had to stop today, if I lost, if something happened and I had to bow out, like even the experiences I've had in the last, it's really only been like three weeks since the day I announced, I have already gained so much more than I'll ever be able to give back to the city.
I realize how many people around you are interested in, in this idea of you having a position like this.
Well, that, and that is just ridiculously humbling, but in my efforts to become a competent, worthy server of our town, I have you know, sat in the offices of the people we respect. And that has just led to the most wonderful and rich and dynamic conversations that I wouldn't have had if I didn't kind of say, well, I'm in, you know, whether it's our Chief of Police or our city manager or previous mayors or just business owners that I've never connected with. And then of course, uh, answering tough questions from those you don't know, but throw them at you, you know, at the end of a forum. The, if I, if something were to change and I couldn't proceed after today, I still have gained so much. It's just humbling at every like stoplight. You know, yesterday I, I had this daunting list of fifty homes I had to hit with my campaign signs. And every time I thought, "Oh man, I got like twenty-two more to go," I thought, "How dare you?" You're so lucky that you have to hit twenty-two more homes of people who have given their, your, them your faith and, and faith and their trust and believe in you to help keep this town going in the right direction.
That's not nothing.
And it's, so it's, it's silly. It's silly and it's a little bit, it is unendingly humbling and all you want to do is do a good job.
Just think the people around you know what you are. And I think what that is, is a very active, a very effective person in our community that we can point to a lot of success and a lot of, you know, positive outcomes from your actions over the years. And that shit's, that's shit that we can quantify. You know what I mean?
Thanks.
Raise this much money for charity through working with this number of people or help this number of groups, put on these events or whatever. Even if it were, even if we were just measuring it in joy that you've caused. And that's not to be overlooked. And I think it often is when you're judging a person. That the amount of joy that you've flooded into our community is worthy of a lot of respect. And that's why I think a lot of people know who you are and, and respect what you are. And I believe, I believe that now that you've revealed a willingness to serve our community in this way in politics, which is the way I'm not willing to serve our community.
Although a few folks have asked.
Yeah, well, it's a, yeah, but that's the joke, I think. I don't think anybody really wants Ando to have some kind of gavel situation. Not my role, but um similar to how you think of our community, I, I feel the same way. And so I, I think you and I have a lot of the same goals, you know? And we understand the groundwork of, of what it is uh, to run a small business in this community. Also like, it seems to me an important time to have somebody from the brewing world on city council in Longmont. It seems like it's time for that, you know? How many breweries do we have?
I think we're at about ten.
I don't know.
Ten, two cideries.
If we count, yeah.
What do we have, more than that?
No, I think we have more than that because there's open doors.
Oh, that's true. And Primitive is about to open too.
And uh, I don't know if Niwak counts as Longmont. Maybe it doesn't.
It doesn't, but...
That's just right there, you know what I mean? And uh, so there, even if it were just ten in Longmont, that's a lot. That's a lot of breweries.
I don't, I'm not so quick to think that someone's industry or, uh, you know, professional background is critical to uh, a seat on council. But no doubt, the craft beer industry has grown.
Useful knowledge base to have that nobody else on council is coming from. They don't know the logistics of if they try and make some new ordinance about how, how people dispose of spent grain or what the fuck ever. Nobody else has anything to say about that because they don't know anything about that. Now we have somebody on council that's like, "Well, actually there are like ten big..." Nobody else has anything to say about that, cause they don't know anything about that. Now we have somebody on council that's like, well, actually there are like ten big businesses in our country. In our, in our city that really bring a lot of business and they, you know, have jobs and they support a whole community of artists or whatever. That's really gonna fuck them over. And if we fuck them over, we're not just fucking them, you know, cause you understand the chain of these, the economic uh dominoes that fall after a while. You know? It's also my opinion, in the next couple of years, uh, knock on wood, I suspect we're gonna have an economic downturn. That's a real possibility. These things seem like they're cyclical. It seems like we're overdue for one.
True.
Um, and I know that the markets are volatile all the time, but like, it seems to me. It's time for a classic fuck up. So it's important that we have people that understand the real functionality of our community from what, from different perspectives. And the brewery perspective is a really important one, especially for Longmont branding, we're Brewmont, man, you know?
I've never heard that.
No, really?
You know, I think you're touching on something important and that is, uh, first of all, uh. We need to be sensitive and aware and hyper vigilant to the economic development within our town. And make sure that we are waving the flag that Longmont is open for business. And make sure we're providing the infrastructure necessary to bring in good businesses with good jobs. Uh, that will help, help our town survive and rise above the next, you know, downturn.
Talk about responsible growth at this point.
Exactly.
Because if we grow too big for our britches, man, it's gonna be bad.
And we've got, and we've got a lot of pressure, you know, as Boulder is capped out, you know, we're seeing a lot of uh folks coming into our town. With a variety of um needs, we're, you know, young adults to senior citizens, I think what we're gonna see here. In the next ten or twenty years is gonna be a very large increase in uh senior citizens, baby boomers who are aging. Uh, and so we'll have to be sensitive to uh services that, making sure we have services available for folks who can't get around as easy.
Yep.
Uh, make sure that we have uh transportation that can bring folks, whether they're older folks or. Uh, those who are less privileged or on a leaner income to be able to get around our town, get to work. Still participate. We want people to be able to, you know, we want our workers to be able to live in Longmont.
Yeah.
And we're, I don't know about the, what you've seen with the value of your home, but I bought in two thousand and six. And then watched my hu- my, the value of my house plummet, you know, cause that was the last bubble.
Oh, yep.
Right? And so the economy tanked, bought a home, watching it plummet by tens of thousands of dollars in value. And now where are we at? Now our homes are higher than ever. And we're still the most affordable uh neighborhood and, and city in Boulder County, but. Uh, that doesn't make us accessible and affordable for everyone.
Yeah.
And if you're a police officer or a firefighter, or if you're Ando, or if you're, um, you know. Someone working at the city office or a bartender at Left Hand, it's becoming really, really hard to be able to afford to live here.
That's right, man. If we get priced out, we lose a lot of the ground that we've gained. If we, let's say. Artists can't afford to pay rent here anymore, birth it or whatever, or just gonna have a great arts community in a couple of years.
Exactly.
You know, we're gonna lose.
You're not gonna commute, commute in for your art.
I mean, I do, I commute everywhere. I'll play in any corner on the.
Yeah, I think we'll start losing what is, what has helped make us to be as vibrant and robust and delicious than, as we are now.
Yeah, people love what is made here. That's one thing that Longmont really has over other communities is we're proud of the product that gets made here. So that's why.
What a funny transition it's been.
Yes.
And we, you know, when I moved in, it was, and probably when you moved in too. Uh, Longmont was, at least at the time, it was Longtucky, as you've already suggested.
Yep.
It was uh the place where people could live if they couldn't afford in Boulder, afford Boulder. And now we walk around with shirts on that say Longmont versus everybody, you know, and. And I think there's this energy and pride that comes with our town now and to your point, we don't wanna lose that and. And a lot of that is homegrown, it's organic, it's artists, it's food, it's culture.
It's not free.
And it's not.
You know, it's not free, like uh there have to be jobs associated with those things, like for, in my world. The arts economy is something that, that um. A lot of the artists in town have worked together to build because we recognize that if we want those jobs, we have to create them. We have to create a place where those make sense.
Yes.
But if that shit goes away, I don't know, like Longmont could go right back to, they might as well have a goddamn turkey plant. You know what I mean? If we're gonna lose all that kinda shit, but it's not free for society, you know? Somewhere along the line, somebody has to make the investment, you know what I mean? Now, I prefer to make the investment through uh benefit of collaboration.
Oh, wow.
You make more money when I'm working with you. That's why you wanna work with me, you know? Um, and that's what I think a lot of the music has done in town is it's kind of been like a little extra gasoline in the engine of these businesses.
Yeah. Whether it's restaurants or tasting rooms or art galleries, what have you.
Right. But it's one of those things where like if, if City Council, for instance, decided to tax breweries. A million fucking percent or what the fuck ever, uh, an amount that made a difference to them. One of the things they might have to cut is how much they pay musicians or how often they do music.
Amen.
Right, that's how like one little change over here really affects the larger economy, especially with the arts. We're such a. Strange economy, we're based on. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. We live off of people's tips and we live off of people coming out to buy beers and, you know.
You know, my first career was for ten years in the veterinary field. My wife's a veterinarian.
That's right.
And I was a veterinary nurse forever. That's how we met and I wouldn't change a thing because now I'm here in Colorado. Um, with a beautiful family and doing what I love to do.
Making out over dead dogs and stuff like.
No. No, Ando. Uh, but you know, that business is dependent upon disposable income. You know, you gotta feed your kid first, you know, yourself and your kid and pay rent before you can give the dog his vaccines.
Of course.
Right?
Yeah.
And then, and then we slide over into the craft beer industry. And that industry, uh, to your point, perhaps just like art, is dependent upon a, a healthy economy where people have. An extra buck or two uh to go buy a craft beer, not a, you know, Coors Light that's on happy hour for a buck down the road.
Right.
Uh, and so the, the vibrance of that industry, art or beer, I think. Is dependent upon a healthy, rich, robust um economy.
Yeah, I just wonder about that stuff. I don't mean to, you know, cast a bunch of negativity into the future about it. I'm just. You know, whenever I get a chance to talk to somebody who's gonna be, you're, you're already a decision maker in our community, you're very influential in our community. Um, and that's uh, that's something I really believe in, um, is uh, is I like to connect with effective people. That's the kinda person I respect. Um, and that's why.
I hope your next interview is better than this. Did you get Chief Butler for the next one?
Butler's a good dude.
I agree.
I did an interview with him once already, actually. Um, I was.
Hopefully by your own choosing, not, not by, not by force.
Yeah, he doesn't wanna be on this side of the interview with the police. Um, but um, I was writing for this website. It was like one of these local websites that's been opening up over the past few years. It have like a new one that's like, oh, the light, the Longmont uh news or whatever, and they'll go away and then. These new people started up and they wanted to pay me to write articles. I was like, fuck yeah.
Yeah.
So I wanted to write an article about how the local police aren't just killing motherfuckers.
Right.
You know, you know, you hear all these bad stories about police all over the country, not our guys. Our guys aren't doing that shit.
You know what they do?
That's a story.
You know what he does on Sunday mornings? He, he walks the neighborhoods.
Yeah, yeah.
He and maybe the uh City Manager, he and another uh couple of folks, a gentleman named Ben. Then uh, Dan, Ben.
Dan Ben.
Dan Benavides, thank you, I'm switching my Bs and my Ds. Um, they'll walk the town, they'll walk the neighborhoods and, and break down those borders and break down those perceptions. And what police are.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and what their role is in town.
He's super nice.
And knock on doors and, and you know, see what they can be doing better. And sometimes being, uh, asking our neighborhoods. And especially our lower income neighborhoods to be accountable to. What are you, what are you doing to serve your town?
Yeah, man.
Not just, you know, what can we do for you? He uh, he left me with some, some words that, after I was able to sit in his office for. Um, just a, hey, I'm running for office, what are some things I should know and help me look through, look at this town through your lens?
Yeah, man.
And he said, his final words were, I want you to look at Longmont as a bundle of opportunities, not as a bunch of problems.
Yeah.
And, and that's exactly.
That's the kinda fuck.
How, as, is exactly how I, how I feel, you know, I've, since announcing. I've been at a forum at the library, I have been asked some tough questions by members of the um, of town. I've been asked, I've met with, you know, those who are hyper involved in politics, which is not always the right. The right demographic to be, to be chatting with about making change. Uh, but. Uh, you know, folks saying, you know, what's the first thing you're gonna do to fix this town? The reporter, what, what makes you a good candidate? And I said, whoa, whoa, I never said I was a good candidate, but we'll talk about that later. How about, what are you gonna fix? And I'm like. Oh, I, I'm not sure, I'm not here to fix anything.
Yeah.
I'm here to keep us on the right track. I love the direction that our town's going. Uh, I have been honored to be a part of that story. And I can't wait to contribute further. Uh, I don't see us as a list of problems. There are, we have some. Things that we have to work on, you know, we're still rebuilding after the flood along the St. Brink corridor. Uh, we still have yet to see what's coming of, you know, to the final realization of. Fast tracks and RTD and, you know, what are we doing to increase uh healthy transportation around town? Yeah, that darn mall isn't uh, isn't loaded with a bunch of retail options like, like we all envisioned it would be. Uh, what is the role of our government in helping nurture that out? You know, we have some big issues with securing water for the future. Uh, and having accessible housing for everyone in town. Uh, but I don't see this as a bunch of problems. I see this as a bunch of opportunities to, just to. Help make this town a little bit better from, for Andy and for my kids and for maybe for my kids' kids, you know?
I think like, when I think of you and I think of your skill set, one of the things that I know is gonna be one of the first things that you're really doing when you go to the office is you'll start. Listening, because you're, you digest information well. And so I believe. One of the skill sets that you'll be using most is your active listening.
Oh, thank you.
Um, but I've seen you use that in the past. I believe that, that you have that skill set and maybe better than. Some other politicians that I know around here.
Well, I'm, I'm very flattered to hear that. I do think that's important. Uh. You know, I was, I was in this room at the library, it was a, it was a, a forum put on by the Longmont area Democrats. Well, that, that should like ring close to home. I've been a registered Democrat since I could vote.
I'm a registered independent.
And well, listen. And, and so I, and so I, I'm not like, uh, I'm nervous because I want to represent myself well. And I want to inspire those in the room to see that I could be the next, um. Uh, you know, the, the one next step on that council to help, help our town grow in the right direction. And, uh, but I wasn't like nervous, I didn't think it was going to be uh hostile or unhealthy. Uh, or weird, but I show up to the, uh, to the library. I walk in the room and I instantly realize that I am the Red Sock in Yankee Stadium. What it was, was clear was that, you know, I just wasn't progressive enough.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and I, you know, I have some friends who will say, what? You sure, Josh? And, and that's true. Uh, you know, I think how I differ from uh my, I have two folks that I'm running against. And one of them is backed by the Longmont area Dems. Um, and where I differ between that gentleman is. Uh, my experience here in town, serving on Planning and Zoning and in the Chamber of Commerce. You know, sitting at these boardrooms with people that I respect and admire, uh, you learn that a hardline progressive. Or a hardline conservative um stance is never the right answer, actually.
Cause they've stopped digesting information fairly.
It's, they're looking through, re- reading analytics, analytics through a skewed lens, you know? Uh, listening to testimony through a skewed lens, you know? And so when you have a hardline progressive or hardline conservatives, I don't think the solution that's pro Longmont in the end is ever either one. It's always being able to bring together, uh, taking the gems out of that side and the gems out of. The right side and bring them together and see what's functional and, and good and, you know, productive for our town.
See, that's exactly what I would want you to say, dude. You know, I just feel like the future of America is not who won the battle between the left and right. It's how did we find out where the fucking middle was? Hello?
Right.
The fucking middle!
Right.
That's where most people are, you know?
Well, that's, um, I, I am glad to hear you say that. I see you as a, as a innovative, influential. You know, a voice of our town, uh, but in that particular room, just as an example, and then I'm sure I'll be in other scenarios. Uh, a balanced, you know, uh. You, consensus building decision, um, isn't popular. You know, you, maybe that room wanted to hear me say sanctuary city or bust. Uh, we should provide affordable housing for all regardless of impact on businesses or rates or what have you. Uh, maybe we should um never have opportunities. We should not be open to, for variances or development along a river corridor, you know, that there's never the opportunity to consider that. Once you start saying never, you start closing the doors on opportunities.
Stop thinking about.
Right, you stop, right. No, I have this thing, I am never going to allow development. Or uh, something that the other, that the other side wants. And, and then you stop becoming a valuable member of our contributoring member of that. Boardroom.
Yeah.
You know?
Once you stop thinking, you've stopped helping.
Right.
And that's how I consider it. And I think the most noble thing a person can do is hear new information that is true. And change their view that was wrong.
Right.
You know, and if you can do that, I can see you very noble person. If you can't do that, you're not playing fairly the game of information.
Let me give you an example of uh something that just, it's the most exciting and energizing. And uh moments in my career serving our town. So I sit on Planning and Zoning. And in Planning and Zoning, you, you're making decisions on where projects go, how dense they are, how tall they are. Whether to approve it, whether to let a project happen or not. Um, and as a result, we are. Uh, burdened with uh receiving uh information from the experts. From staff and, um, and the experts and consultants that are involved. Uh, we have to and we're obliged to hear from the residents who are about to be impacted by a decision you're making. And then we have to have a robust discussion as, as commissioners, uh, based on the information that we all know. And uh, some of the most humbling, but also rewarding times are. Uh, you walk into the room, you sit behind the dais, you're, you instantly feel less imp- like you're not important. You, you have, you just have a mission to do. You are here to serve.
Yes.
Uh, take off the me hat and, you know, you hear the discussion from the staff. You hear the discussion from, you know, the party that wants this, you know? And then you hear the public say, no, we don't want this. I don't want this project next to my neighborhood. I don't wanna have obstructed views of the mountains. I don't wanna have this change. And then we. Uh, question and, and ask, you know, and, and, and um seek out more information and then discuss as a, as a commission and make a decision. And some of the most rewarding experiences are when you walk in thinking. One, you know, like thinking that you're gonna support a particular motion, but uh testimony, feedback. The public have all played a role in helping you see a different light.
Yes.
And that, that is like when you kinda rise above you.
It feels so good.
And you just become part of something bigger. Now you are part of the Longmont story for generations to come.
Right. I love to be convinced of things. That's one thing I just cherish in the world. I'm, that's why I always engage about politics and religion. I'm looking for somebody to talk me into some shit. I love to be talked into shit. Because I wanna know the higher truth. I wanna, I wanna have access to that truth that I don't currently have or that I think I have, you know? I love that part of it and I'm glad to hear that your opinion of it is similar.
Now, the, the, the kinda the misunderstood side of that story is. When you're sitting behind the dais there, you also are confined to a list of review criteria. Meaning no matter what your personal interest is, you can't use that as, take it that into consideration. You have a list, sometimes it's only a few criteria and sometimes it's multiple pages long. You know, we get these hundred page packets that we review and. When push comes to shove, you might have from, you know, item. Twenty seventeen dash forty five A to L. And and so no matter how much you don't wanna negatively impact the neighbors. Who are here pleading to you not to do it. No matter how much you, uh, you know, you don't want i- in your heart, maybe. Um, you think we shouldn't allow a project to occur. When you're when you're hitting the review criteria. And if all the checks are there, sometimes and it's it's hard, but it but it's the right thing to do. Sometimes you have to. Hit the little button on your microphone, wait your turn to speak and look at the audience and thank every one of them and you. A good commissioner writes down their names, you know, and tracks exactly what their concerns are. And look him in the eye and say. We've heard every one of you and we know and I and I know. But based on our review criteria, we just can't tell. Developer Tim that he can't build there. I know this is frustrating for you and I don't want this for you. But we have an obligation to respect the law and we have an obligation to serve. And and respect everyone's role in that part in that story. And so that has led to some decisions on my behalf. When I've had to, you know, say, hey, I'm really sorry and I know this is not what you wanted and I applaud you for coming in. This is democracy in action. But I don't have a good reason to deny this project. And and that is the most humbling moment, you know, when you when you have to say no to people. I've seen people in the audience that I work with. You know, my neighbors maybe and I and you, the next day at the office, you're getting dirty looks from your coworker. But all that you can do is at the end of the day say, well, I've I respected the law and I know that you can't see that. Because the driveway is next to yours.
They didn't read the hundred page thing either, you know?
You know, but but when push comes to shove, the formula that the school district provided said the schools could be accommodated. The traffic study said that it's not triggering a problem. The utility said they can provide the utilities. Uh, and in the end, they're providing something we need. Maybe it's a portion of their units are affordable. Uh, gosh darn it, I can't decline a project if it meets the quota, you know, and and that's a hard thing to explain.
Yeah, but you obviously you're a good communicator and I think like. Uh, that's one thing that has carried uh Brian Bagley as well. He's a very effective communicator. And I believe that's why he's sitting in the seat he's in right now, cause he's a very effective communicator. I don't agree with Brian on everything, but I should like him.
Sure.
Um, and when I first met Brian Bagley, I'll tell a quick story.
He's our mayor. He deserves he deserves as quick as as you want.
He uh, I went to a coffee with the council. Cause uh I was starting to get curious about local politics. I wanted to see who smelled like bullshit.
Right.
That's cause in Texas. Yeah, dude, you know. Allegedly crooked. Is how I have to say it. But yeah, crooked as fuck, I think.
True.
In Texas, uh, and I would write songs about the mayor and stuff, get in the newspaper about it, but, you know, I wanted to see if. I didn't look into it in Longmont, cause I didn't want to open up that diaper and be like, oh, there's turds in here. Oh, no. But I opened it up and it was like, you know, here's this Republican guy. Uh, at the time he was Republican, now he's an independent, but. Who is so against letting marijuana come into our city limits and whatever. Uh, I like pulled him aside. After that, we talked for a little while and shook hands and kind of agreed to disagree, but like. Felt like uh almost got through to him a little bit and was like, I'm a reasonable person. You're a reasonable person. Let's let's go get a sandwich sometime and talk about weed. You know? Uh, and so that's, you know, he was almost my gateway into into getting involved again and and local politics. But since then, we've talked to, you know, Jonathan Singer, who's who's working in Denver, you know, Jonathan, right?
What a great man.
That motherfucker is the coolest dude. Uh, listener, if you would like to know about a cool motherfucker, do you look up Jonathan Singer? Uh, he's at the Colorado House of Representatives, I guess. Um, he's got a pair of glasses, nice looking guy.
And a very long list of issues he's trying to fix, you know, to to address.
And a list of shit he has fixed.
Amen, yeah.
Which that's the kind of guys we like, right?
Yeah, regardless of your party affiliation. And and I am, I'm sure there are conservative members and I could probably list a few. Uh, where I would fu- be equally inspired by. But Jonathan, uh, Democrat or not, this guy cares about his his district. Uh, is passionate about his constituents.
Yeah.
Uh, he's answered his phone on my behalf, on the brewery's behalf. Uh, gone out of his way to make himself successful accessible and and serve, man.
It's a good example of 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 what a modern politician can be.
I agree.
We get this cat out of here before he starts trying to drink people's water. Be red crashed. Red likes to pop in toward the end of the interview just to see if everything went okay. Seems like uh at some point in these podcasts, uh, everybody has to meet this cat.
What's up, Red?
He bothered Karen McCormick pretty extensively. She used to be a veterinarian as well.
That's true.
Uh, I guess she is a veteran.
There's actually two people running for state office that are veterinarians uh in Colorado right now.
Really?
She's one of them. And the other one is a gentleman who comes from uh. From kind of the eastern plains, not Sterling. Somewhere somewhere in the on the eastern flats and uh. And he's out and he's a large animal vet and he's here to uh represent uh a very large war district.
I've got an idea. This is an idea for an event and we may not wanna do this. Uh, it's an event where we get you guys together, the 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 candidates that have uh nursing experience with animals.
Yes.
And we get everybody in the room to sign a thing, promises to vote a certain way based on the outcome.
Whoa.
Of a competition.
Okay, and what is the competition?
Everybody gets a hurt dog.
Yes.
The first guy to fix the dog automatically elected. That's a great idea. I don't know how legal that is or whatever. I'm not sure if you get people to sign.
Speaking of of legal and what Jonathan has worked hard for, um, I think we've seen some changes come out of DC recently. Uh, out of Mr. Sessions specifically as to the priorities of marijuana.
Yeah, they're gonna try that.
Yeah, what do you think about them?
I don't think they have a fucking prayer. I think like cowboys in Texas are rubbing CBD oil on their joints. It's over. It's fucking over. And and all these farmers in America are starting to smell the money and shit. It's it's fucking over, you know? More than half of the states either have recreational or uh medical, right? So it's like. It's over, dude. Just grow up about it. It's time to grow up. Sorry. Nixon made it illegal to put dudes like me in jail, you know, so like, you know.
You know, back to back to Chief Butler, I was sitting in his office and I asked him, what's his take on marijuana? What's his personal take? And he said, you know, Josh, uh, we haven't seen an uptick in um. Uh, accidents related to marijuana use since we legalized. Uh, he said. Uh, we haven't seen an increase in crime related to marijuana. Um, and he said, actually, you know what? The number one contributor to. Uh, traffic accidents in our town is. And I and I was afraid, cause sometimes beer is high up on that list. And and he said, nope, it's not marijuana, Josh. It's not, it's not beer. It's actually distracted drivers. It's checking your iPhone while you're driving.
That's it, dude. But it's all gonna get fixed. The cars are gonna drive themselves soon, but.
I think I just saw something in on the westward that says that we're in the final runnings for this um. What's the pod? The like hyperspeed pod thing?
Not light rail.
No, it's it's like. It's like time machines. No, but it's uh with the dude from Tesla backing it. And it's these high speed pods that travel up and down the I seventy corridor. Uh, in minutes and traveling at airplane speed. And I think Colorado. Uh, specifically with a partnership uh with C dot, um, just became one step closer to being one of the test cities for them.
Wow, man. I know in Las Vegas, they got like buses that drive themselves and shit like that.
Really?
Yeah, uh, self-driving bus, you know, self-driving cars are already a thing. Um, but they're getting proliferated more and more. I think like if you could, if you're looking to just save lives in our country. It's not, you don't have to worry about guns. You don't have to worry about terrorism. None of that shit factors in at all compared to. Accidents on the road.
Right.
Terrorists, terrible gun stuff, fucking terrible, but when you're just comparing numbers, it's the accidents, the road accidents.
Right.
That's the that's the thing that's killing us most. Then maybe it's our food and our guns and that, you know, not getting along and this kind of shit and our gods and. It's all gonna, that's all a problem. Gods and guns and all this shit.
We can solve those in the tasting rooms of the world.
Absolutely, Josh. I believe that with my whole heart, man. Uh, but I would because I've spent most of my adult life. Hanging out, drinking with drunks and, you know, buying drunks a drink. That's been a lot of my experience, especially in my early art life.
Well, maybe we should wrap up with a couple of things that I think. You know, and 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 maybe the first thing I would like to ask you, Andy, as a as a guy who's uh integral to the Longmont story. Do you, anything that we haven't talked about, are there issues that you are concerned with on a personal level? You know, just as a Longmont resident, things that you care about. The ones that we see come up. Uh, in these town halls and these forums at the tables when you're meeting folks early in the morning. Um, is of course oil and gas. Uh, is of course uh access to water, transportation, jobs, affordable housing. These are some of the things that we hear about time and time again.
Water's on my radar. Uh, water in the future is on my radar.
What's your?
Talking about buying.
About buying water, yeah, yeah. In the windy gap.
Yeah.
Whole story.
To me, it seems like that's a good idea, but. It doesn't make sense to invest in all this water if we're gonna let motherfuckers frack it up and then like poison it all. What's the point of making the investment if we're gonna let people poison it? So these things to me are connected. Um, that's the.
You know, I think that we have to dig in on that and I'm with you. I agree. Uh, you know, someone smarter than me said that this town is. Wonderful now because of wise decision made, decisions made by people before us. Uh, and our town is privileged and set up for success now because of. Taxes and rates that people before us have paid.
Right.
And one of those is, you know, one of the most important parts and aspects and tools of a town is its water. And so. Um, I too am in favor of uh supporting windy gap. Uh, and you know, the the voters spoke. And the city staff and experts said that we could get by as a city at six thousand acre feet of water. Uh, the voters said that they're willing to approve up to ten thousand acre feet of water. Uh, and the city council moved with kind of split the difference at eight thousand acre feet of water. Uh, and I and I too, uh, think that. That having too much water will never be a problem in our town. You know, we're in the middle of the desert. Uh, we don't know how we're gonna continue to grow and it's like the number one insurance policy we ha- we have is water.
If nothing else, we always sell it off later.
We grab it now. Uh, and I sat in in Harold Dominguez's office and said, what about selling it, leasing it out? Uh, and he said that, yes, that's possible, but actually, right now, there are um ordinances in place to make that difficult. Because sometimes when you sell water uh to Frederick Firestone Erie. That it opens up the door for encroachment. And so. Right, so what makes us so special? There there was a sticker a number of years ago. I don't know if you ever saw it. It said, don't broom field Longmont.
Nope, did not see that.
And so this speaks to, you know, we don't wanna lose our identity as a town. And so. Encouraging uh our surrounding neighborhoods to encroach upon us might be something that we don't, we wanna be careful doing. Uh, but it is possible. We get into, we enter into contracts that last twenty years relating to water so it can be changed down the line. But I think what is misunderstood about windy gap of folks jump to. We're sourcing this water to sell to oil and gas. And actually, it's in our constitution uh and in a state ordinance that we can't.
Good.
And so uh I think that is something that just requires uh more education. And more uh and better informing uh the voters.
I knew they weren't allowed to sell it to them, but if the fracking dudes uh have a spill or infect groundwater. We're just fucked, you know, so it's like, if we're gonna invest in in in. Procuring groundwater for ourselves, we can't allow it to be poisoned because then we've ruined our own investment.
Right.
And we don't make any money from the poisoning. If we did, we could talk about, you know, oh, you poisoned us, but you pay us a billion, million, whatever. You know, so those things seem like they're connected.
And I think that's so, so we've got the water. Now let's talk about oil and gas. This is uh something that, you know, I go to bed and I wake up a Democrat and. Um, I drive a hybrid and I just bought a second hybrid. Uh, I.
You can add them together and have a normal car again.
Hey, listen, you buy a Highlander, which is of course the ultimate family car. You buy a Highlander V six and a Highlander V six with a hybrid engine.
Wait a minute, you have two Highlanders?
I'm about to.
Josh, there can only be one Highlander.
I got them both. And and you know what? You you know the difference between the Highlander traditional engine and the Highlander hybrid engine?
One's gonna cut off the other one's head.
And and it's the hybrid, it's the hybrid engine. Hybrid engine's faster.
Really?
Dude, I'm not saying that I'm gunning any any red, any green light. If anyone ever like look like puts their nose, turns their nose up to a down, down to a to a hybrid. You don't know. You haven't been in one, man. The Teslas, you like, you know, these battery powered engines fly off the line.
Dude, my buddy Peter, uh, my my filmmaking buddy, he's got one of these quiet little cars. You're like. You get in and you think he's about to start the car and he starts driving. And he does drive fast. But if you're officers, if you're listening, I'm not telling you Peter's last name. Motherfuckers! I'm no rat, but uh he does go fast in that quiet little motherfucker.
Well, anyway, so we're we're believers. We we support um environmentally. Conscious and and sensitive uh directions anytime possible. We got compost in our front lawn.
Yeah.
Uh, and.
I love that system in Longmont. Yeah, that's so cool.
I'd love to see it become, you know, I think with a number of years, uh, it'll become less foreign, more normal. More people will continue to opt into it and I think eventually that'll be the way of the future.
Yeah, we really like it at this house. We have a garden in the back. We use that for them. I wanna bug you about another thing. Homelessness.
Yeah, man.
That's a real thing in our community. It's been an uptick, right?
I think nationwide.
We've got like a, you know, an arts district, a creative district downtown or whatever. For people to walk around and appreciate art or whatever, but like also uh people are living down there.
Right.
Because something's wrong.
Right.
Somewhere in the system, you know? What do we do about that on a on a governmental level?
That's a great question, Andy, and uh I think the first thing is to recognize that is a national problem. I think we're seeing homelessness and transient communities. Challenge our neighbors around Colorado and beyond.
Yeah.
And certainly, uh, as a guy who drives to twelve sixty five Boston Avenue every day, which is left hand. Um, all we gotta do is jump over the little berm, walk down the greenway that's right there and I see a variety of camps.
Yeah.
Uh, along the way and and I did that just yesterday. Uh, but. You know, I think the solutions, I don't know if we have the right solution yet and and if you have the solution, I look forward to hearing it.
I don't pretend to know.
The I've asked smarter, again, I've asked the leaders of our town what they think the solution is and I've heard a lot of similar answers and. Um, I think it'll be a couple of things. Uh, one, uh, we had a big change happen here in the last year and that is. The forces at B, the organizations who are serving those already that are homeless and transient community the most. First of all, we have to keep supporting them. Uh, the Hour Center, um, Hope for Longmont, Safe Haven. These are organizations that are. Uh, feeding and housing and keeping warm those who are um in a tough spot. So we need to keep uh supporting those organizations. The county as a whole took on a new endeavor where. Um, gone are the free meals. Uh, if you're gonna, if you're gonna go to a shelter or get a meal. Get a shower at any of our surrounding Boulder County neighborhoods, you have to be registered. So there's none of this like slipping through the cracks. You have to be registered and it's traced and tracked. And uh now you are um at least trackable and a part of a of a of a system. And the next step, you know, I asked Mike Butler, what's what does he think the answer is? Uh, and so what that is, there's a. There's a little bit of a of a tough love component to it and, you know, when push comes to shove, the R center is gonna give. A bag lunch to someone. Uh, when. Folks are going to be fed, but actually the the change of direction, Hope, for example, who historically has given out meals every night. Have moved away from that and with the issue with that is if we continue to give away meals and don't. Seek any accountability from those who are in our town. It just waves a flag high in the sky that says, hey, there's free stuff here in Longmont. You know, there's free meals and there's free free. Um, uh, free places to stay without. You know, there's free meals and there's free free um uh free places to stay without any accountability.
But in a motivating way.
Exactly.
Give them some gas in their engine to do something.
Getting them registered and looking for opportunities to get these folks engaged. Um, earn your meal.
Yeah.
You know, you don't get a free meal, I don't get a free meal.
Yep.
Um, put in a couple hours at the R Center, put in a couple hours serving the community. If we find ways to activate and engage these folks, you know, then then they're gonna, then. I think the whole picture starts to come together.
That's a really beautiful idea, really. If if they're in a system, we can say, you know, we wanna give you free meals, you know? But we can't give you free meals forever.
Right.
So cuz like nobody can afford that. Not forever, ever. You can't afford that. So it's like, after a while, maybe like. You could check in over here and like carry some stuff over from.
Help a couple of ladies.
Whatever it is.
It has to be compassionate.
Hold a sign at the fucking, you know, wear this vest and hold this fucking sign, you know, whatever it is, you know? And now that you've logged a couple hours doing that, golly, here's another meal. You know what I mean? That makes sense.
What the answer isn't, the answer isn't to just, you know. Have a cop drive through Roosevelt Park and keep kicking them out, you know? The answer isn't to walk the Saint Brine corridor and kick them out of the camps.
Take their blankets.
Because what ends up happening is is, I mean, it's survival. They just find the next place.
Yeah.
And so.
Or they don't survive. You fucking take their shit away from them in the wintertime. Maybe they don't survive or whatever. That, we don't wanna live with that in this community. That's not who we are, you know?
Right. So I think it's the solutions will be, I don't think the solution, I don't think there is one solution that's gonna cure it all. And and I look forward to talking with those experts who di- dig deeper into that and and turning to them for advice and turning to them for guidance. Uh, I think one, we need to recognize that homelessness uh doesn't respect borders. So folks in Longmont. That are homeless in Longmont don't stay in Longmont. Folks who are homeless in Boulder and Lafayette, Lewisville don't stay there. It's about finding the next opportunity. So that's the first thing. We need to recognize that doesn't have borders. It's gonna take a team effort. You know, municipalities are gonna have to work together. The hour center.
Considered that. That's an interesting way to think about it.
You know, the the one concern has been that um we're seeing a lot of folks leave a shelter in Boulder. And catch the bus up to Longmont, uh, and that we're seeing the kind of flooding of it. And I asked Edwina Salazar from the R Center if she sees that. And she said she doesn't think as much, actually. Um, so I think first recognizing that it's gonna take. You know, a multi-town partnership. So that's one thing. Two, uh, I think. Getting folks registered and being able to identify and know and track who's registered. And if they're not registered, get them registered before they get that free meal. Uh, and then look for ways to engage and and um and hold folks accountable in a compassionate way. There will be meals, but you gotta you you gotta like, you gotta earn it to some extent. I don't know what that exactly looks like at this moment.
Partnership, you know?
We're doing it together.
You're we're feeding you, you could feed in a little bit. And a lot of these people, uh, you know, are have mental instability.
And then you you hit the final part. And I think the final piece I was gonna touch on is better knowing who they are and. Um, a big chunk of them have mental illness and so we need to address mental illness.
Yep.
Uh, and I think that's also a nationwide epidemic, but certainly in our own town, addressing the needs of mentally ill is a big, big. You know, failure on our behalf. Um, you know, some folks. And then and then when you remove mentally ill folks and you remove folks who are employed but underemployed. You know, folks who are actually working forty hours a week, but not, they don't have enough money to afford that apartment here in town. They're couch surfing. They're kinda taking it night by night. Uh, so maybe those folks just need a little extra nudge. Uh, to get to get more stable. They just need a couple of weeks in a shelter with meals, get their feet on the ground and get and get back on. The rider side. And you remove those folks and then you get down to the cold, hard members of folks who are actually. Chronically homeless in Longmont is um, you know, is relatively few. And those are the folks that where the system is failing and we need to address that.
Interesting. Uh, like I said, I can't claim to be an expert on any of this shit.
Yeah.
I'm I'm a total hobbyist. I'm interested in in our city because I love our community. I think that's where you're coming from too. Uh, but I sure am glad to hear uh you're getting involved in this new way. How can people get involved with your campaign?
Ah, man, thanks for asking, Andy. Uh, so the best way and the best place you should start is. Um, go to joshforlongmont.com, but only do that if you've registered to vote. So I mean, whether voting for me or for anyone else, it's time to be a part of our of our story. It's time to be a part of. Democracy in action. It's time to vote, even if you're not gonna vote for me, register to vote anyways. The turnout, especially on um these off-year elections is like just nauseatingly low.
It's low, man.
And listen, I don't know if you can complain if you don't get involved.
That's my opinion.
And so so I say to everyone who's listening, whether they are writing me off as a, you know, a guy who's worked for a brewery and throws parties. Or if they, you know, are on board, you need to get involved. Vote, even if it means voting for the other guy.
Yeah.
Uh, but let's presume you've hung in this long. You're you you're at least curious. Check out my website, joshforlongmont.com. Uh, make me a friend on Facebook. Every once in a while, I put up stuff on Facebook. Uh, I think you'll be finding me. At Max Place on Saturday mornings at eight from eight thirty to ten between now and the election, uh, and presumably after that. Um, so I am, you know, fiercely loyal to Longmont, fiercely uh loyal to the people. Uh, and then, let's see, we have uh a couple of different opportunities, you know, I would say just uh click. Look at the Times Call or track my web my website. You'll see, uh, there's a forum uh coming up at Skyline High School. Uh, there's a forum coming up, um, hosted by Sustainable, Resilient Longmont and EcoCycle. Uh, so there's a couple of opportunities to meet and greet with your uh candidates and the more you know, um, the more empowered you'll be.
Oh, that's a really uh important note, folks. Don't be fucking stupid. Learn some shit. Become powerful. Josh, thanks for uh coming on my little show, man.
Oh, I love it, dude. It's an honor and I I can't believe I have sat on this couch twice now.
I know.
You know, in Saturday Night Live, on Saturday Night Live, if you attend five, if you become a member of the Five Club. Then you you get a coat, you get a jacket.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's it's like, I think it's like velvet and it's maroon. So we do a couple more of these. I wanna walk out of here with a velvet, a velvet uh coat.
We could talk about that.
Maybe a robe.
Uh, no, a robe would be good. A robe would be really classy. All right, well, uh, when is Election Day, Josh?
February twenty seventh. Thank you, uh, Andy. We uh, the ballots go out February fifth, so you'll see those the sixth or seventh. Um, turn them in early, uh, but Election Day is the twenty seventh. Uh, and I hope. I hope you join me on this journey to elevate this town that we love so much.
Well, folks, that's uh, I'm voting for Josh. I don't usually uh tell people how I vote, but I'm voting for Josh. He's my friend and I believe in him. And uh, that's why he's on this goddamn show. Um, that's who I recommend you vote for. Uh, I'll see you at another show. Cheers. Thank you very much for listening to the show. Contact me if you wanna be a sponsor. If you wanna hear more stuff like this, go to andiepller.com.